And even though we have lots of folks running today, one thing is for certain, that they'll all have to work together. And they'll be working together to make Montgomery better than it was before they all took office. With that being said, the candidates, after they speak, they will introduce themselves and give a few words. They'll be mingling amongst you, just to talk about whatever it is on your mind. That's why we're here. Oftentimes, when candidates take office, it's difficult to get a hold of them. Not everybody, but somebody. But the people who are here care enough to listen to you and to meet you, and I hope you'll care enough to meet and listen to them and give an opportunity to hear what they have to say. With that being said, I'm going to ask Reverend Toller to come and lead us in prayer for the dollar.
Mr. Reed, here, Brown. I've gotten Father, we invoke your presence here today. We thank you for just help, life, health, and strength. We pray, God, that you would steady our minds and we go to the polls to vote for our leaders that will guide this city. Move now by your power and by your spirit in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
In lieu of the pledge of allegiance, because we're all Americans, I'm going to ask Mr. Toller Brown to come and sing our national anthem. Brown? Please stand.
Oh, say, can you see here by the dawn's early light? For so proudly we hail as the twilight lasts gleaming through those stripes and bright stars through the perilous night. All the rivers we marched were so gallantly streaming. And the rockets' red glare, the bombs bursting in air again proved through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does the sun best to mingle, better yet wave? For the land, oh, dear, free and the home of the race.
All right, for those of you who are hungry or a little thirsty, we've got some libation in the back and some food up front. So you can meet these candidates on your own, I'm going to ask Julie Beard, who's running for District 2, to come up and say a few words. Beard, please come on.
Good evening, good evening. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. I feel it's such an honor to be here with all of the guests and the candidates that are running for our office in the upcoming election on August 22nd. As Mr. Reed said, my name is Julie Turner Beard, and I'm a resident of District 2. I have lived in District 2 all of my life. As an infant, as a child, as a teenager, a young single mother, and a married woman of 25 years, I have lived in District 2. To say that I know District 2, I lived in District 2. I was educated and I was an educator at Morning View. Attended Calhoun Heights and Leanne High School, and taught at Morning View and Leanne High Schools. So when I've been canvassing the last three months, when I go to the front door of people and I have front porch conversations, I'm seeing people that I know. And I look out here tonight and I see faces that I'm very familiar with and we're friends. I've seen people tonight that I've met in the last year and a half as I've been working on my campaign. And I see faces tonight that I don't know, but I look forward to meeting you after tonight. Why am I running for this office? I'm running for this office because something happened back in January of '22 that just started to interest me and within me, and I said enough is enough. And I am passionate about District 2. I don't have all the answers, and I am not a politician. I'm a retired schoolteacher. So therefore, what I bring to the table is a lot of common sense. And I bring also that when I'm talking to people, the number one thing that they're interested in, they just want somebody that cares about them. They want a city councilman, or councilwoman in my case, to be able, they want to be able to contact me. They want to be able to call me. They want to make sure that I answer a text or an email. And they just want to make sure I live in District 2. My husband and I have lived in the same house for 25 years, so we'll go home tonight, put our head on the pillow every single night. So we live at 3862 Cedar Avenue, in the diehard of Montgomery, Alabama. District 2 is a hidden treasure. We have a lot to offer. It is more of a mom and pop district. We have a lot of businesses that have been there over 30 years, and they're still thriving. We have a Laguniti Park with a Laguniti Tennis Center and the golf course and the hiking trails. We have a lot to offer in District 2. I want to be that city councilwoman that rides the streets, that takes care of the damn trees, that takes care of the tennis shoes hanging off the power lines, and I will answer their phone calls, and I will be at the city council meetings. I appreciate your support, moreover, I appreciate your prayers. It's been a long, hot summer, walking door to door, and I just appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Beard. Next I'll call Ms. Kalia Bell, District 4.
Good evening, everyone. It is so wonderful to see all of you all here today. As has already been said, my name is Kalia Bell. I live in District 4 and have lived in District 4 my entire life. I did live in District 5 for a little bit, in my younger years. However, Carver is my home. I love Carver with all my heart. I am a graduate of Tuskegee University, with a bachelor's degree in architecture. I have a desire for District 4 to be a destination place. The place where you call that 1-800 number because you want to go and visit. I have a desire for District 4 to be like that every single day. If I dream big, if I don't reach all the way to the top of what my dream is, even if I fall short, it will be better than it is today. The people of District 4 deserve all of the things that everybody else in our county has. Sometimes we're forgotten, and sometimes we're pushed aside. And I have, you know, meeting people and going to different neighborhoods and seeing disparity here and seeing just wonderful, plush, lavish areas. The one thing that I've learned is that everybody really and truly wants to have access to everything they deserve. Our latest issue has been trash collection. And what I've learned is, it almost seems like you have to know somebody in order to get stuff done. The one thing that I really want to do, and I'm not going to talk about my six points that I listed on my card. We can talk about that anytime. You can call me and we can talk about that anytime. But the one thing that I really think we fall short on in our city is we need to make sure that everybody has access. You shouldn't have to know me in order to get things done. I want to work with leadership to ensure, when you call 311 and get a number, or whatever department is enjoying exactly what you would like for them to do, I want your call to be just as important as my call. I want you to have the same power that I have when I call. I want them to respond to you the same way they respond to me. Sometimes we get into this battle of what we can do individually. But when I sat down and I thought about it, I said, but how many times are we going to have to call in a favor to do something, to get something done? If we have efficiency in our different departments, if everyone has what they're supposed to have, if there are enough workers, if there is adequate equipment, if everyone is trained like they're supposed to be, it's going to run like a well-oil machine. There are people who will go to Chick-fil-A because of customer service. They'll give up a whole hamburger. They don't even care. They will eat chicken. Because customer service, more times than not, their order is going to be correct. But they're going to be heard. They're going to be listened to. They're going to pay their money, and they're going to get what they ordered. There should be no difference. There should be no difference when you call for the service, that your taxes cover. Whether it's calling the police, whether it's calling trash pickup, whether it's calling because somebody's having a mental or an emotional breakdown. We should all have access, equal access, to make sure that everything we need is covered. I want to restore all of that to our government, so that we have an equitable plan of view. Without that equity, you've got to know somebody to get something done. And it's time out for that. That's called living in lack. When you don't have what you need, you tend to skirt off and shy away from it. And then, when it's just fever pitch, then you want to call. Let's not live in lack. Let's get prepared. Let's have a city that is prepared for whatever comes, so that we can adequately treat and be effective for each and every member of our community. If you have any questions, want to talk further, I have cards and all of my contact information is there. Thank you for your time.
Next will be District 4's current Councilwoman, Ms. Arthur Graham.
Hello, hello, everybody. How y'all doing? All right, y'all come on. Y'all coming here from the candidates. There needs to be a little more energy in this room. Hopefully, somebody in this room is going to represent you, and hopefully it'll be in District 4. So hello, thank you for having me. I appreciate the MCBC for putting this on tonight and all the effort you went through. It looks really nice, and we got some nice foods and drinks, so I appreciate that. So let me just tell you a little bit about who I am, just in case you don't know. I am a resident of District 4, of course. I became active in my community when my husband and I purchased our first home. I became active in that community because I wanted to be a part. I didn't sit at home and wait for somebody else to do it. I got out and I got involved. I began to join my neighborhood association. I began to work alongside my president. As a matter of fact, when my president left this community that I lived in, she asked me to take the helm of the neighborhood. She asked me would I be the president, and I did. I took the charge. I was concerned how I was going to manage it. But just following all that she gave me, I managed to, three years, do well in that neighborhood. And then during that three-year time, I got very close to my predecessor, and I watched him and things that he did. And then, when the time came that he left the office, vacated the seat, I took the seat. Well, I didn't take it. I'm sorry. District 4 voted me in, but I ran. I ran for District 4 because I wanted to be a part. Just like in my community, I didn't want to sit at home and wait for somebody else to do it. I got involved in my neighborhood. I got involved in the district. And so I began to get involved, and I got out there, I ran, you voted me in. I'm so grateful for that. So for five years, I've been a city councilperson in District 4. Yes, we have a long way to go, but I like to say, we are not what we started off five years ago. When I was elected into office, I was told by the mayor at that time that the Salvation Army was coming on the Mobile Highway, and there was nothing we could do to stop it. I began to get out and talk to the people in the community. We began to sign petitions and come down to city hall. I like to say, five years later, that did not happen. People have the power. I just began to pull on my people in my district. Also, when it comes to our infrastructure, we have some areas in Western Montgomery that don't have city store. And stormwater drainage adequately enough, so they flood out down there. Their septic tanks flood out. That's the issue. Who wants to live in an area where you have, what's in your septic tank coming back up in your bathroom? Coming back up in your washing machine? You have a flood of issues in your home. No one wants to live that way. And we live in Montgomery, Alabama, the capital city in this state. That is unacceptable on every end. So after long, heated debate and conversation about what we would do with some of that opera dollars, District 4, we have secured $5 million for District 4 to start the process. So some people, those who, those engineers came out of study, they said they were the closest to the Katana Creek, and they were the worst impacted. So they're going to get some sewer. That's the type of effort we've made in District 4. We have been moving. We created an initiative for two years. People have been walking Mobile Highway, picking trash up off the streets. That's our community. Nobody's coming to clean it up for us. So we've done that in District 4. I have been active. I have been vigilant. I've had quarterly meetings since 2018. Sometimes I have a lot of people, sometimes I don't, but that's okay. I pray the information get back out to the community. We have been having quarterly meetings for four and a half years, one of that five years, so that we can keep the people informed. I have been transparent. Every time I hear that a liquor store is coming in District 4, or anything that District 4 may not want, I made sure the community knew about it. I called the president and the neighborhood associations to make sure they knew they were coming. And if they didn't want them, we did not vote them in. We were not going to allow liquor stores to keep stacking up in Western Montgomery. We was going to do something better over there. We can have viable businesses. That's the only thing we do is drink. We do more than that. Bring up a business that we want to go in and patronize, and that's what I'm fighting for in District 4. I started to fight that in 2018. I'm not political. I don't know the politics, Ram. That's probably why I'm not as light as I would be if I knew them. But what I am is a servant, and I'm going to do that, whether you elect me in or not, I'm a servant. But I'm going to do that because that is who I am. I'm also the deputy clerk in Montgomery County. I've been working in the clerk's office for 18 years. Serving people is what I do. It is who I am. I'm a minister in my church. If somebody called me on the phone, I'm on it if I can do it. So that is who I am, and I ask you in District 4, if you're in here or you're listening, vote for Arthur Graham, August 22nd. I want to keep serving. I have a passion to serve. I have been serving, and together, we will keep pushing District 4 forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Graham. Next I would like to bring to the podium, Ms. Fernette O'Reilly, candidate for District 4.
Good afternoon. First and foremost, I'm going to talk and I'm going to offer, and I'm going to do it. Been in District 4 47 years, have not left District 4. So let's talk about our district. Our district meant a lot to me. I was educated out of my district. I was raised by my district. My neighborhood raised me. I was able to walk in my district and visit my people. And what I mean by that, we grew up as a family in District 4. We need to be a family again in District 4. I believe in my district. I know a lot of you all remember Gaylord's when we were growing up, because we going to get our little trash suits and our jellies from there.
All right, now.
I know you all remember that. I know you remember Rep. Joe Drugstore, because that's one of the drugstores we used to love to hang out at. I know you remember Hardest. Those are the economic growth that we lost over in District 4 that we need back. One thing about us growing up in District 4, our family taught us the value of our property in District 4. And we can't lose that. We've got to get back to taking care of our, our family. Wasn't a such thing as Western Hills, Gill Village. All of us worked together, Ridgecrest and all. We could go anywhere and celebrate with everybody, and we need to go back to celebrating with our districts. I took a ride. I love to ride. That's what I do. I get up early in the morning, I ride around, I look. My district is gone. Overgrown grass everywhere. Tires in people's yards, abandoned homes. Turned down homes take our value out in our neighborhoods, in case you all did not know. So that's why we need to redo these homes, so that we can use them. We also got to take care of our seniors and our children. What do we have our children do now? It's time to pull our children back and teach them how to be younger adults. We had people that taught us how to educate ourselves. Wasn't no such thing as, hey, get it on your own. Don't do that. Come here, young man. Come here, young woman. Let's work together. So now we're back to working together again. Our seniors need some things to do, and believe me, I believe in my seniors, because my seniors hold us down. They're the value of our district, and I'm going to use our seniors for our district. We got to do some economic growth. I believe in entrepreneurial teaching ownership. I was raised by an entrepreneur family. Our business has been sitting in District 4 for 40 years. Never went anywhere. People try to move our family? No. The West Side is the best side. Man, we stay on the West Side. So that educates you on how we run this. Our neighborhoods are going to be neighborhoods again. It's okay. We can go to Ridgecrest and enjoy ourselves. It's okay. I can go over there, because I do it anyway. Because I have friends everywhere. And just sitting back talking to my friends, my family, and coworkers, they encourage me, step out on faith. God gave it to you. Bring your district back to where it was and stand strong. 30 years in the Department of Corrections. Solid. And I give back, and they know. I climbed the line in corrections, and guess what I'm doing for my district? I'm climbing the line, because we going to be back. Best side, we coming back as the West Side. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Reilly. Our next candidate will be current Councilman for District 5, Mr. C.C. Callen. Well, there's one more candidate for District 4, Mr. Forward Councilman, Mr. Terrence Dawson. Dawson, come on up.
First of all, let me say good evening.
Good evening.
It's a pleasure to see you, to the chairman of MCBC, the officers, members, and all of you that have gathered. Candidates who put themselves on the firing line to offer themselves as a candidate for public office. That's always special with myself. One time I was in a meeting, and somebody said, well, you're not from Montgomery. You don't know anything about us. Let me give you a little history. My mom went to Carver. My dad went to Booker T. When they went to Carver and Booker T, or Yellow Jackson and the Roberie, it had no business with each other. One night, those of you who know what the Tijuana Club was, they danced in the Tijuana Club. They went by the Benmo Hotel. Nine months later, I popped out at St. Jude Hospital. Dr. Pettis was my doctor, so if I'm not Montgomery, I don't know what is. My family moved from Old Field to Underwood Street. That's between Hope and Tap Street. My grandmother moved to Mobile Heights, to McElvee. My aunt moved to Mobile Heights in the '50s. The first community flyer I put out was for James Sherman around 1988 in Mobile Heights. I worked with ADC since I was 22 years old. So for over 30 years, I walked the street and walked the fields for ADC a very long time. To me, being an elected official is not a role of self-grandizement, nor is it to play a role to make people feel you important. I don't believe in that. There's a lot of work that needs to be done in the community, and the elected officials and the communities have to work together to achieve those goals. I remember one time Dr. Reed, chairman's dad, had a meeting for the Democratic Party. And Dr. Reed said, well, you know, we going to have this meeting today, but I'm going to invite some white folks to the meeting, so the blacks folks know the meeting real. If the blacks and white community don't work together, there's no way we can move this community forward. When you look at crime in the community, businesses that want to relocate to your city, they look at struck crime data in order to make a determination if they want to locate. Case in point, Walmart. Walmart was going to move on the west of Montgomery. But Crime District 13 was the fact that it didn't move, because Crime District 13 went all the way up to Riverside. So when you look at the people that lived in Mobile Heights, Collar Park, West Gate, South Lawn, England, you were trapped into a zone where these were good people on the other side of Fairview, but on the other side of Fairview, there was a lot of criminal activity taking place. People want developments in their neighborhood. They want new stores. They want new malls. They want new developments. Your census data is really important to making that happen. Businesses hire companies to do demographic research. When they do demographic research, they make a determination what area they're going to invest in. Now, what makes me angry about Montgomery? Number one, each chase development was done where the state lived here. So here you took a taxing sin that should have been used in West Montgomery, but you gave it to East Montgomery. You took some of the richest land in Montgomery, going across Ryan Road, and did a development. Another company on Mobile Highway, they were given the enterprise zone. They said, well, if you give it to us, we're going to hire some third ship, what do they call it, the people that do the welding. We're going to have third ship weldings. They never did it. Gateway Park, to me, was a prized development in West Montgomery. When you go out to Gateway, before it was a gateway, it was nothing but mud, dirt, and a lake. That development not only enriched West Montgomery, but when Hyundai developed and was bought, City Council paid around $60 million for the land in Hyundai. We were able to make a correction to I-65. In making the correction to I-65, how many people knew that there were 800 houses lifted out of the 100-year flood plan in Ridgecrest because of Gateway Park? See, many people don't know that. If you lived in an area and you had to buy flood insurance, then you would have known that the flood insurance in that area was going to be more than your house number. Riverfront Development, expansion of the Renaissance, the convention center. How many people go down under the sheds at the Renaissance? Okay, people complained, well, we not going down there. You can't, you can't get people from under there. Now, you can't even find a seat over there. Riverfront Development, Amphitheater, Michigan Stadium, all kinds of development. But there's still a lot of work to be done. Always remember, every development, every expansion, everything that you want to do, there has to be a dollar attachment to it. Money doesn't fall out of the sky, Scott. It doesn't rain money. You got to be able to figure out how you want to make it happen. It's a pleasure being here. I appreciate. I appreciate talking to you, I appreciate seeing you. If you want to talk to me, you can find me, I'm on Facebook, or you can call me at five six one forty eleven, five six one forty eleven. Just remember one thing, like I said on my ad, in the old words of Mark Gilmore, get more with Dawson.
Thank you, Councilman Dawson. Next, I will bring back a Councilman from District 5, Mr. C.C. Calhoun.
Hey, good evening. Thank you, thank you, Joe Reed Jr., and thank MCD for putting his on. I'm going to be brief, he told me two minutes, I don't want to give a campaign speak. I came out here to be two guys, don't let my record speak for itself. I'm C.C. Calhoun, here in District 5. I have been serving for four terms, I'm looking for my fifth term, so I want you to go vote August the twenty-second. I'm married to Sharon Calhoun, we have two adult kids that's born and raised in Montgomery, Alabama, went to public schools, they're working here, they're successful citizens. It's not much, you know, I've been around doing this for sixteen years. I've met you guys out on the street, my work speaks for itself, my record, this leadership that you can trust. I've been respectfully leading throughout this city, we're working to move Montgomery forward. I believe if we move Montgomery, District 5 also grows. So we have to move Montgomery, look at Montgomery as a whole. It's not a district, but we all work for Montgomery. So I'm here to serve you, so August the twenty-second, I want you to go out and vote C.C. Calhoun, keep Montgomery moving in the right direction, and I'll prove this missing. Thank you.
All right. Next, Mr. Andre Ruffin, candidate for District, City Council, District 5.
Thank you so very much, it's a pleasure to be here. I thank you so much for the invite. It's indeed a pleasure. Back in the nineteen eighties and early nineties, there used to be a commercial that came out about the day I sat soon. And it went something like this, if you don't look good, we don't look good. Right now, ladies and gentlemen, we don't look good when it comes to the city of Montgomery in three areas, in my opinion, that I think that we can move forward. Number one is crime, number two is community, and number three is our youth. I'll start with crime for number one, because we definitely need a higher standard for the city of Montgomery. Crime, we cannot solve outright, we just can't do it. I would lie to you and tell you, I'm going to get up here and I'm going to solve crime to an all-time level. Ladies and gentlemen, that's not going to happen. But what we can do collectively is we can get together, have a seat at the table, and come up with some solutions and resolutions to move us forward. Had a conversation with a young lady, Seth Johnson, a couple of months ago. And she came to me and she said, do you know we solve our own crimes here in our neighborhood? I said, really? She said, how do you do that? She said, we work together. That's one thing we do. Here in the city of Montgomery, I believe we live or we work in our own silos. And I think it's time, at this point or this juncture in our life, that we work together when it comes to reducing crime. We have to do that, ladies and gentlemen. When it comes to our youth, our youth, let me repeat that again, our youth. We have to come up with a plan that's going to move us forward. I'm so happy to have Mr. Najaporn Flynn, for those that you know, hold your hand up there, brother. He working with me on my campaign, I wish we had ten thousand more young adults like him. He's a senior at Robby Lee High School, he works with Marsha Johnson on the Youth Council, and he's doing great things. So my thing is, how can we invest in our youth? Number one, we got to get out the message, we got to get our teachers, our retired teachers, we have to get our retired military. Number two. Number three, we have to get anyone who's interested in investing in our youth. And we have to get local organizations out to invest more. I think that's something that we need to do at a faster rate. Number three, our community. I cannot say enough, I cannot stress enough. These are some of the things, when it comes to our community, we have a whole array of things that we must solve when it comes to our community. These are some of the things that we think about, we talk about, we write about, and nowadays, we text about. Our community, what is going on in our community? Number one, we look at certain areas, and I'll use the west side of Montgomery as an example. There are some times where they don't get the right resources, as opposed to certain other areas, they get the appropriate resources. So I want to be that vessel to connect the dots, or to put the puzzle back together and let people know that you have a voice. You have someone that's going to give you or provide a higher standard for you. Here lately, I believe we've just been operating on a standard, and we just check the block and say, hey, this is what we have, this is what we got, this is what we're going to get. Moving forward, ladies and gentlemen, we have to put ourselves on a pedestal to move forward. A little bit about me, I'm a graduate of Alabama State University. I'm also a graduate of University of Alabama, have an MBA from the University, from the Madison Graduate School of Business. Also have a master's degree in education from Seton Hall University. I taught at Robby Lee High School for a period of ten years and various other schools as well. Have my wife and children with me, put your hand up in there, have my daughter at my table, and have my supporters back in the back. So I want to leave you with this, ladies and gentlemen. As you look around in District 5, there are certain things that we want to address. And those things that we must address, they need to be addressed accordingly. And they need to be addressed expeditionally. Again, accordingly and expeditionally. So if you look at, I want to make sure I get this message out. When it comes to leading our people, when it comes to addressing our people, you need someone that's going to speak for you. Not speak to the issues, but who's going to empower you as well. For me, I want to empower you. I think we have to get away sometimes from, you know, giving business licenses or rejecting business licenses or giving away money, and we sit back and we say, and we tell certain people to sit back and say, gee, we have to do a little bit more than that. Okay? So moving forward, I want to empower you, I want to make sure that we have available resources that we have for. And I'll end with this. This is my old clarion call, I've had a lot of messages, I've presented to a couple of audiences. But I'll leave with my old clarion call, and I give everyone two words. And those two words are, it's time. It's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to get some things along and to sandwich this a little bit, to accommodate some other elected officials, I want to ask, while I stood up my crowd here, I want to ask the Mayor of Montgomery, Mr. Stephen Reed, to come up and speak, this took a point in time, as candidate for reelection. And he really only has two minutes.
It's like City Councilman Reed, you know, then you get three, then you're City Councilman Reed. Good evening.
Thank you.
I'm Stephen Reed, I am coming before you to ask for your support and your vote in this reelection of twenty twenty-three as the Mayor of Montgomery. I was honored to receive sixty-seven percent of the vote four years ago. And in that race, we made history. We did not know that within the first one hundred days, we would come through a once-in-a-century pandemic. And I want to thank all of you for your help during that time, because it took all of us coming together as a community to really get through that. And although we lost friends, neighbors, and church members, there was a lot of hands scratching, there was a lot of concern during that crisis. But we were able to manage it by sticking together, and we were able to manage it by really calling upon better angels in this community and ourselves to really get through that. Shortly thereafter, we had another crisis that emerged after the George Floyd murder. And we were a community faced with going one way or the other. Many communities went up in flames, many communities went up in civil unrest, this community did not. That's because of a lot of you were out there in the streets with us to make sure that we peacefully protested. And during that time of crisis, again, we came together following our better angels. And I think that speaks to the spirit of Montgomery, and the spirit of what we can do together and what we have been doing over these last three and a half years. There have been some trying times, there have been some challenges. But through that, I think with our leadership and with our vision and with your support, we have been able to move this community forward. We passed a once-in-a-forty-year investment for public education in our first year. We didn't miss any words about that, we believe that we have to invest in public education and invest in our future. And we led that initiative from the city with our partners in the county, with our partners in the state legislature. But make no mistake about that, that doesn't happen without the city leadership, and that doesn't happen without my initiating that petition to have that done. And so now our schools will get an additional thirty-three million dollars. When we ran commercials four years ago, people said, well, how is he going to improve schools when he doesn't control the schools? Well, we don't have to control everything to influence it. That's what leadership is about. You don't have to control every labor or power to influence it for the better. And so what we did was we put education first, because we wanted to make sure that this is a city where everyone has an opportunity to live, learn, and earn. But we weren't satisfied with that. We looked at how we could reinvest in this community, and we took out fifty million dollars in savings. Savings that we had reinvested back into the city in our parks and recreation, in our fire stations, in our public safety areas, in our infrastructure, in other programming and initiatives that many of you have been talking about for years, long before I was elected to any office. And so we took action to make sure that it matched the words that we were saying. And we wanted to make sure that as you looked at our transition plan, as you look at the things we said, that you can hold us accountable. And I'm honored that we have been able to hold true to those things that we told you we would do. And even with that, we're in the best financial condition this city has been in in over thirty-five years. We have double A-Fish credit rating, which is basically eight hundred credit, for y'all who keep track of credit score. It doesn't get much better than that. We have promoted, and we have focused on diversity, equity, inclusion. We have the only black female finance director of any major city in this state's history in Betty B. Bill. She has managed our finances along with our vision of what we want to do to put back into the city and to make sure those neighborhoods and the communities that have been underserved and left out and looked over and left behind no longer feel that way. Now, we know, again, there's still more work to do, there are headwinds that are beyond our control in the state legislature. There are headwinds beyond our control at the federal level. But we continue to push because we continue to believe in what this city can be. And I believe when you look at what we've done around black entrepreneurship, it has been unprecedented of what we have done to bring more than four hundred percent increase of entrepreneurs onto the roles of the city's procurement department. That means jobs, that means opportunities for businesses. That means we don't just have to talk about prayer, politics, and protest. We can talk about profits too. Because we want to make sure that our businesses grow, we want to make sure that all of you have an opportunity, when you have an idea, to make that work right here in the city. You don't have to go to Birmingham, you don't have to go to Atlanta, and you don't have to go somewhere else because the banks aren't lending to you. We did something that no other city has done. We made a minority business institution, Liberty Bank, the largest black bank in this country, the second-largest depositor of city funds. Now, I got to tell you, that didn't make a lot of friends at the country club. That didn't make a lot of friends at the St. Roquan. But when you make sure that you're investing in people who invest in your people, then you have a better chance for everyone to realize the progress and the opportunity that we have. So we have done these things over and beyond obstructionist. We have done these things over and beyond Republican challenges and hurdles we have put in our way. We have done these things over the old guard, wanting to take us back to a different day, wanting to keep us from changing. But you all didn't elect us, and you didn't elect me just to make history. You elected me to bring about change. And I see that change is working, and that change is impacting this community. But by no means are we done. You don't unwind two hundred years of an unfair system in three and a half years. But you start and you work headstrong throughout. And you understand that when the roses come to thorns. And so that's okay for me, I was built for it. So I don't mind any of that, as a matter of fact, I relish the conflict. I don't mind that at all, because I know I'm doing it for you, and I know I'm doing it for so many others who I see in the grocery store. People who I see who work for the city who never got a nineteen percent pay increase at one time. Who never got a fifteen percent increase like our public safety and purchase partners did. We didn't have to cut costs, we didn't have to cut corners. We didn't have to do any of those things to be fair to people and do right by everyday people. And I believe in the dignity of work. And I believe in making sure that whatnot, you're cutting grass, or whatnot, your cellular accounts payable. That you have a dignity in everything that you do. Because we have to make sure that this is a city that provides for everyone. And as I said for several years now, because we are bringing more people to the table, doesn't mean that you have to give up your seat. It just means we're creating a bigger table. It doesn't have to be a zero-sum game. But we have to make sure that people who are doing business with the city, and people that are doing here share our vision and share our values. It's not enough just to talk about the civil rights movement if you don't practice it. It's not enough just to market it and sell it if you don't believe in it. And if you don't believe in it, then we don't really want to do business with you. If you don't believe in it, I don't care if you don't agree with me. Because I believe in, I believe in the spirit of it, I believe in the message and the method. And so that is why we consistently do what we do at City Hall. That's why we make sure that we push forward and we push on things that people will never see. Because we know at the end of the day, we have to pray to the Lord on high and be at peace with ourselves with decisions that we make. And I can tell you, as it relates to the things that we have been doing, and the things we want to continue to do, to restructure government, to make sure we are innovative, and make sure that we are bold in our approach to how we invest in all of Montgomery. North Montgomery, West Montgomery, South Montgomery, East Montgomery. All of these areas are important. So yes, we go to Washington DC all the time, because that's where the power is. That's where the money is. And we go and we press forward with the Biden and Harris administrations about what their potential is and what their vision is for Alabama and for Montgomery. And I don't make any qualms about that, because I will continue to be a champion and a promoter for this city each and every place, each and every time that I get a chance. That's what mayors with vision are supposed to do. When you're changing the status quo, then you have to understand some who have benefited from the status quo aren't going to like that change. And that's what we're dealing with now, that's what we dealt with. But with your prayers and with your support, we have been able to stand strong in that over these last few years. And I'm proud of that work. And now finally, I want to say this, and then I'll be done with my two minutes. This city has so much potential. And we are just scratching the surface of it. And it's with people in this room, and people who could not be here tonight, who are helping us do just that, at all levels. From the grassroots to the grassroots hops, you are helping us grow this city in an unprecedented way. I want you to understand this. When my chief of staff first came on, we had a state representative from Pike Road who called him and said, just don't let the mayor turn this into Selva. Well, that state representative failed to mention that Joe Smithman was the mayor for Selva for well over twenty-seven years. So don't try to rewrite history as if Selva went down when James Perkins came in to make. Don't try to use dog whistles around the leadership and around the efforts that many in this room and many who've gone on to glory sacrificed for. And so we know the potentials. And with that, with the favor of God, we had the best economic development year twenty twenty-two this city has ever had. And why do I say that? I say that because God blesses those who do right for others. So when you do right for others, God shows you favor. And that's why we turn the city on its head in terms of our performance. Those who were hoping to hamper us, those who were hoping that we would fail, those who were hoping to say, see, I told you they couldn't manage. See, I told you they couldn't create jobs, I told you they couldn't run the city. They looked up and they got just the opposite of that. And they got the best financial position, the best economic development year, including Hyundai. I want you to understand that, including when Hyundai came in two thousand four, I'm not admitting any, any year. And I will make up the data, I just reported. That came because of the work that you all do and the commitment you've shown. And we're continuing to work, we are complacent, we are uncomfortable, we know there's more work ahead. We know that we have to do a better job as it relates to public. We know that we have to do a better job as it relates to public safety in this community. We hear your complaints about gunshots. I just want to make sure that those same people who complain about gunshots in East Montgomery, complain about gunshots in downtown Montgomery, complain about gunshots in midtown Montgomery, that they complain to those legislators who passed those bills with the bill as carried.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All the objections of the Sheriff's Department, all the objections of the Sheriff's Association, the DA's Association, the Police Chiefs Association, and the Mayor's Association. And they'll leave it to the cities and those of us to deal with cleaning it up. So we have to make sure we hold everybody accountable. But by my standard and by my count, I think that we have done a good enough job to ask for your support, and to ask for your prayers, and most importantly, to ask for your vote for another four years, to continue the work that we've been doing, and continue representing you at each and every level we can to bring more opportunity, and most importantly, more equity to each and every zip code in this city, and to make sure each and every person feels like they matter, they count, they're being heard, they're being seen, and that they're going to be invested in by this administration. We've done it for the last three and a half years. We'll do it for the next four with your help. I thank you so much for everything. Keep up the great work, and thank you.
And the doors of the church are open.
They're open. I bought all the cars.
It could be a pass.
Take the name off the ballot. Go in the town.
I'm going to come to City Council, District Seven, Mr. Christopher Turley. I do want to say, I want to thank the mayor for his had a previous engagement for coming out to see you guys in this department. While there are other people that the city has to be business with, which the mayor's been hired to handle that, your voices and your company, you guys are important, and that's why he's here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a hard act to follow Terrence Dawson and the mayor, but I'll do the best that I can. I don't think that my origin story is as interesting as the Tijuana Club, but I can tell you that my mom and dad were both born in Montgomery. My dad was born at Fitz Hill Hospital. My mother was born at Jackson Hospital. They're five years apart. They both went to Sidney Lanier High School. They met in nineteen sixty-five when my father was law clerk to Judge Frank Young Johnson, Jr. And my mother worked at investments at what was then First National Bank of Montgomery, which became First Alabama Bank, which became Regions Bank, and probably still should be in Montgomery right now headquartered. But I was born in Jackson Hospital. I was raised in District Seven. I'm a proud member of the class of nineteen eighty-five at Sidney Lanier High School, and I stand before you a candidate for City Council, District Seven. About seven months ago, the current city councilman announced that he was not going to run for reelection, and that he had found his successor. It was not me. But I decided then and there that I was going to go out and start visiting these community associations and these small groups and listening. We all know the issues that Montgomery faced. I started talking about the things that bring us together. We all have our homes, but we all travel the same roads. We visit the same shops and the same restaurants. We enjoy the same parks. We have all of these shared foundations, and it's all those shared foundations that we build our lives. It's important that we keep those shared foundations vibrant, strong, and safe. District Seven is the heart of Montgomery. I would imagine, even if you don't live there, that you touch that district at least once or twice a day, going to and from work, or going to a shop, or to a restaurant. I get up every day. I think about what I can do that would help out my neighborhood, the district, and the city, and I go to work. And that's what I will do when I sit on the City Council as the representative for District Seven. I appreciate you. I'm at home with MCD C. You are my friends. You're my neighbors. Please note, and please note, the people that have been with you, the people that are here tonight, and the people that will be with you tomorrow, next week, next month. Think of me when you vote on August twenty-second for City Council, District Seven. Thank you very much.
The next candidate for City Council District Seven is Mr. George Chovis. Chovis, come on up.
As being, thank you. Being a lifelong resident of Montgomery and a lifelong resident of District Seven, grew up on the West Side, and that they still do. One of the things that people like to talk about is progress, and they like to demean the word progressive. Well, Alabama's been very progressive. And we've been progressive in our politics, we've been progressive in our culture, and in our mathematical sciences. We first state to have a first black legislature, um, um, colored white legislative Congress. Um, then Mr. George Washington Harvard, the contribution of Roland Parks.
Talk up.
I'm going to speak. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
There you go.
Okay.
There you go.
There you go. Thank you. Once again, I'm George Chovis. I'm running for District Seven. Uh, as a lifelong resident of Montgomery, Alabama, I'm born in St. Mary's Hospital. To my mother, I do, she's been late with me for kind of a very long time, and I think I'm here to just to make District Seven proud. And as being a lifelong resident of Montgomery and the West Side, um, grew up there with school up there, uh, got my master's degree from Auburn University in the Lawrence. And when I went away with my master's degree, um, the guest speaker at that time was none of them, Jack Stephen Reed, and he had told us sometimes we have to kind of f up sometimes, we have to fail up sometimes. And I took that very personally because that's just kind of how I just live my life. I kind of, you know, fail up sometimes, and I think we all should fail up sometimes. But one of the things that I want to talk to you about is that the, this word about progression progresses. I mean, that, that has been so demonized in the media lately, but the thing about progression is is that Alabama has been a very progressive state. In our politics, in our scientific and mathematical conventions, in our culture, um, cultural situations. We were the first state to ever have a congressional black caucus, then did Mr. George Washington Harvard, and Roland Parks' contribution. Now, one of the things about progression is that people already play like the verb, the right wing and the left wing. The right way or the correct way. Well, there is actually no white wave or runway. It's just the correct way. And the thing about correction is is that no matter how hard you try, correction still can be corrected.
That's right.
And one of the things about, the reason why I want to run about, run for District Seven, is to show the people that, look, no matter where you start from, no matter where you come from, you can still work out. If you have a good mother, good father, good background, good friends, good neighbors, just want to make sure that you can do what you're supposed to do. You can get somewhere. And if you keep a strong hand and stay out of trouble, and no matter what people say, continue to do what you know you need to do.
That's right.
You get the way you need to be going.
All right.
Alabama doesn't have triple A's in these things for nothing, because we are a triple A state. No matter what you do, we can overcome, and we can overcome that together. And I'm for you all to go on to me for four years in City Council so I can feel claim of kingship, and I would love to live among all of you, and you all will pretty much take me anytime, day or night. Thank you.
Okay, let's go there.
All right, our next candidate is Johnny Cotton, who's running for City Council, District Eight. Scott?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think, uh, I want to ask everyone to be respectful of our candidates here, uh, who are talking in the back. If you would hold it down, if you have a conversation, if you would mind taking it outside of the candidates and the other individuals, he would be very, very grateful. Thank you. Once again, I said, good evening to you. I think eighty-five to ninety percent of you in here know me, so for the fifteen percent of you that do not know me, my name is Johnny Cotton. I grew up the son of a single mother, a working-class mother, who instilled in me three values: put God first, get a good education, treat people the way you want to be treated. When I look at those three values that I was raised on, put God first, God's friends will come and go, he will never leave you. I look at the back of this room, I see the man who ordained me as a deacon here at Free Wheel Baptist Church. Pastor Edward J. Nettles is in the back. Education. I graduated from Alabama State University. I earned my bachelor's degree from Alabama State in Criminal Justice. I attended grad school at Auburn University in Montgomery, where I earned my master's degree, and I'm finishing up my dissertation at Walden University in Public Policy and Administration. So with that being said, I'm not going to keep it long, as most pastors will tell you. The three things that I, I really want to see in District Eight in this city, number one is infrastructure. Many of you think that District Eight doesn't have that issue, but we do have an issue. Johnny Carr was built over ten, fifteen years ago. Every day that I come home when school is in, I see students dodging in and out of traffic. Why? Because there's no sidewalks. You built a school, junior high school, you built an elementary school, and you didn't build sidewalks for the kids to walk on. So one day I inquired about it, went over and I talked with school administrators over there, and I find out one of the assistant principals, in order to keep the kids safe, created a makeshift walkway. We, we, we don't need that. That's the job of our city council. Our roads need to be paved, they need to be widened. Drains need to be cleaned, edges need to be cut. So I say that to say this: We have a lot of issues in District Eight, contrary to popular belief. A lot of issues. I think the mayor stole my thunder when he talked about minority-owned business. That was a big issue of mine, is a big issue of mine. We need to help those people who support our community. As a city councilman, I want to ensure that minority-owned business get a piece of the pie. If we're bringing in these big business, these big entrepreneurs, then I want to ensure that they hire minority-owned businesses in some of these projects. They deserve it. Otherwise, without us, they're just going to close. They're going to fall by the wayside. And last, I'm almost finished, y'all. Crime, that's the big elephant in the room. Majority of you know that I've served as a Montgomery police officer over twenty-plus years here. And before I retired from the city of Montgomery, I was over in Internal Affairs Division. So my take at crime is a little bit different than what some of the candidates may see it as. All of my degrees are in criminal justice. Alabama State Criminal Justice, AUM Criminal Justice, and my doctoral is in Public Policy and Administration, but my specialization is Criminal Justice. We need to address mental illness. As a former police officer, I responded to scenes numerous times, dealing with folks who are mentally ill. Folks that are taking people hostage, taking their families hostage. There are a lot of veterans in this city. If you think that the Fourth of July doesn't trigger people who suffer from B T S D, think again. Think again. Many of our law enforcement officers, we're not equipped to handle mental illness. The city needs to hire social workers to assist them, to do their job, to do their job. And secondly, we've got to address crime in a way of not just putting people in jail, throwing away the key, locking them up. My plan is this: The city needs to create a diversion program. And a diversion program would consist of this: Students between the ages of eight, sixteen, who violate misdemeanor offenses, need to be required to attend eight hours, eight to ten hours of workshops, skill-making, things that will help them develop in life. Because when we talk about conflict resolution, it is a big issue. I spent ten years of my life working as a school resource officer in the city of Montgomery. At one point in my career, I was assigned every school in this city, so I understand what juveniles are going through. I understand what they're going through. The juveniles that we once were, these kids nowadays, a lot of them feel a sense of entitlement. Only you work hard for what you have. Some of these kids today, they think they just should be given to them, should be given to them. The diversion program needs to have, well, let me explain that real quick. When you violate the law, the police officer doesn't have to make an arrest then. If it's a misdemeanor, they have one year and one day to make that arrest. So the diversion program is like this: When schools call the police to their school for a student fighting, disrespecting the teacher, and trying to use the criminal justice to give our men and young men and women criminal records, disorderly conduct, I really hated that. I really hated responding to a school over a fight and having to take a student to jail and give him a criminal record for disorderly conduct when this could have been avoided. The mayor doesn't tell you this, but about twenty years ago, I responded to the scene of the mayor business, when he was mayor, before he was popular. Somebody held a gun to this man, hey, rob his business. I was one of the responding officers to that scene. So when I hear people talking about, uh, Steve Reeve didn't like crime, and everything's out of control, nah, Steve Reeve's been a victim of crime. He understands crime. He understands what is, what it's going to take to move this city forward. And as a young officer, as an old officer, we need to support our police officers. I believe in the Citizen Review Board. It's very important. It not only protects the officers, but it protects the citizens of this city. And with that, I look forward to meeting with you all after this is over, and I ask that you support me, Johnny Cotton, City Council, District Eight.
And our candidate for District Nine, this is Roland Skye.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much, MCD C, for having me tonight. I just want to also mention that back in two thousand, you all put your support behind my husband, Andrew Skyer, for District Court Judge Grace, and I appreciate that as well. But I'm running for District Nine for one reason and one reason only, and that is the youth in the city of Montgomery. We have a major deficit, as you can definitely see, from my side of town to the other side of town, but it all is one town. And I think we're missing something, and we've been missing it. I've lived here for thirty years, I've never seen anything like this. So, not from here originally, so when I got here, I, my eyes were just, I couldn't believe it. So what I think we need to do to move forward in this town and make it a better place, you got to start with the kids, and you got to start young. and crafts after school, tennis programs, I'm a huge believer, you keep them busy, they will not get in trouble. We don't have tennis facilities for these kids. We have it at Wind Lake's Country Club, we have it at Montgomery Country Club, we have broken-up, beat-down courts at Lagoon, we have gunshots at O'Connor. I wouldn't bring my kids to O'Connor. My children used to have to play at O'Connor because that's where the best pro was in town to bring my children to. But, make no mistake, I escorted them on the court and off the court. These kids need a place to belong, to feel important. Yes, you have amazing D-one basketball and football players coming out of this town, but guess what? Not everyone is bred to play those sports. Okay? We need, we need a community, starting with where the money is, and that's where I live, that area. And I'm not gonna say anything about my opposition. I have invited him. Mr. Reed has been at my house from several, uh, community action, um, events. He has been invited. I never in a million years thought that I would run for anything, ever. In fact, I was, I was toying with this all the way up until two days ago. I don't even have a sign yet. I don't have a card yet. So I'm, I'm ready. If y'all are ready, it's gonna be a big battle. This is gonna be tough, and I want you, I want your support. We need these children, we need these children to be equal to everyone else in this town. Thank you very much.
All right. We have another candidate, Mr. Richard Williams, who's District Two, who had a previous engagement. I want to bring him up, brother.
Watch still.
Watch still. Good evening, Democrats. All right, we're in the house. I want to thank Chairman Reed for excusing my tardiness, but I'm a man of my word, and when I tell young folks that I'm gonna be in a place to hear them debate about if the city should have a curfew or not, that I'm gonna be there. And so I'm appreciative that you would create this space and allow me to go out and border, but that's been the story of my life, being here for the past seven years. My name is Richard Williams, and I moved to Montgomery seven years ago with an opportunity to be able to serve. And that opportunity to serve led me to Metropolitan over on Rosa Parks, but it was time for me to make my first purchase, the biggest purchase of my life, that was in District Two. That's where I purchased a home. And my mother always told me, growing up, that where you, where your home is, that's where you should reside, and that's where you should provide help to. And so you may say, what have you done to be able to be the person that sits in the city council seat? When I started the center called the Beacon Center, which is located on Gaston Avenue, that's an eighty-five hundred square foot of help to our community, not just serving the West Side of Montgomery, but serving the North Side, the South Side, the East Side, and the West Side. That center was the center that was responsible for the USDA Food Box Program, when everybody was getting food boxes across the entire city. That was us. When it was time for the COVID-nineteen work, why not us, I live? I'm the founder of that, and we did that work, because we felt that there were people in our community who should not be working, who were not able to get a COVID-nineteen test. We provided that space. And now we're at the journey, where I decided to say that what is next? And so after launching a program that's in our court system that does alternate sentencing and bond reduction work called Next Steps, I had to find my own next step, and I believe that's serving on our city council. I truly believe that change can happen in District Two, but it can also happen for the entire city of Montgomery. And we're truly gonna be the capital city of dreams, then we need to dream. We need to dream that the city can do different things, such as our community centers. There are some things the city just can't do well, and one of those we've seen in our community centers. I truly believe that we need to use, like our sister cities, the idea of partnering with nonprofit organizations and giving them the space to be able to do the work that they already do so well. Many of us know nonprofits that can do the work. And then when we look in the space of economic development, when I look across the businesses in District Two, they've done an amazing job. They've been resilient without the programs and all the difference. But when I look at what's happening in the capital city, I believe District Two businesses need to be connected to those resources. We need new businesses, and we need to support the existing businesses of District Two, that they can be able to be a part of the things that are like the lab on Dexter, to be able to find out those different programs. And finally, there are many who will have conversations about the crime and different things that are happening in the city. This upcoming Saturday, two weeks ago, we lost our first student in our court program. For me, crime is not no buzzword, these are real lives.
That's right.
These are people's sons and daughters.
All right, man.
And if you've never been to the funeral site, and you've never been there on a crime scene, then you may not know the compassion that it really takes.
All right, man.
But when you've lost one that you poured into, then you know it's just not a buzzword.
All right.
We have real issues in this city, but I still believe that in this room, we have those who have the innovative ideas if we would just work together.
All right.
And I believe that that's the way that you address issues. You address it with the five fingers, brought together into a fist, because that's the way you make a change. What my prayer would be, and what my hope would be, is that you would try something different in this capital city, that you would try something different, and that you would choose Richard Williams to build a bridge, not just for District Two, but to work as a team on the city council, because teams is what the capital city means.
All right, man.
I want to give all our candidates a hand, if you will, for coming out. There are a couple of the people I want to recognize while we're here are, um, first, whenever you're running a race, there's one type of race is the best race to run, best race to run, and that's when you're on a post. And I want to acknowledge City Council, District Six, Ronde Mitchell, Goodford, and Bobby. And so, uh, recently, the district decided there was nobody who was gonna pair with him. And so I want to thank him for taking some of his schedule and coming in here. I also want to, and one thing about elections, voting is a lifeblood democracy.
That's right.
And there are lots of people here, both black and white, who sacrifice their lives to make sure that this democracy will endure.
That's right.
And we can vote. And with that, I want to recognize the chief elections official in Montgomery County, our probate judge, Mr. Jason Love, who's standing in the dock. So if something goes right, you can congratulate him. If it goes wrong, well, you know, it's the same person.
That's right. That's right.
But, uh, he's a, he's a good man, and we really appreciate his support, his leadership, and his work in the county. This is a reception, and I want to return these candidates back here because I withheld them long enough, and you've heard a lot, but I want to encourage you to talk more. Uh, I want, instead of one, um, Judge Love to raise his hand so y'all see him. Put it down really quickly, so any election question that you have while he is here, an unencumbered, please ask him, okay? I'll cut down a lot of Facebook chatter and a lot of misinformation that you get, so he's here. And those individuals who are from, uh, District Six, your councilman is here, if there's a one-on-one time you want, they'll be here, but I want to thank all these candidates for coming and spending their time and taking time of their schedule, because this is not an easy thing to do.
That's right.
My dad always said, if you want to know what people think about you, run for office. Right? And sometimes that is met with approval and sometimes disappointment.
That's right.
But the credit goes to the man or the woman who's actually in the arena.
That's right.
Okay? Whose face is covered with dust and sweat.
That's right.
Who knows the great enthusiasts.
That's right.
The great triumphs as well as the great disappointments. And paraphrasing a little, whose soul will never be with those timid ones who neither know how the victory nor defeat. That's not my mistake, Roosevelt. But I want to thank you for coming out. The tables have numbers above them, so the people in those districts will know where to go to meet and talk with their, uh, current representatives and those who are seeking office. And that's what this is about, it's about choices. One thing about elections, every four years, citizens and people get to choose their elected representatives. So there are no term limits here, so you don't need a term if you got an election. You don't need that. But it's your turn to decide, you get to decide whether you want to heed people or whether you want to change. That includes everyone who's running for office. So with that, I want to thank you. Um, like I said, I want to return everybody, um, want to turn these candidates back to you, because they belong to you.
That's right.
At least for the time being. So thank you again for coming out. This has been a wonderful, uh, experience, and I look forward to seeing you in the future. Those of you who are not members of the Montgomery County Democratic Conference or the Alabama Democratic Conference can go to the website, theadc.org, that's T-H-E-A-D-C-dot-O-R-G, where you can go to the Facebook pages and keep up with what's going on. I won't get into reaportement and things of that nature, I'll save that for a later date. But there is a new district that's being created here. Just briefly, the legislature did pass, uh, a plan which in all likelihood will not satisfy the federal judges, because it looks like the last plan that didn't satisfy the federal judges. So we expect the federal judges to either take one of the plans that was submitted and that was rejected by the legislature, or the judges will, what we call a special master, who will draw a plan. So one of those things will happen, but that struggle, that fight goes on, and that is equality. And very few people have had to have constitutional amendments or federal legislation to give them access to the ballot. Women got the right to vote with the Nineteenth Amendment, and it took the nineteen sixty-five Voting Rights Act to ensure equality. And so with that, with the sacrifices of all those people, I want to encourage all of you who are here, because you care to be here, to tell your family, tell your friends, tell your colleagues to vote. Vote for the candidate of your choice. And people always get the government that they deserve. Don't forget that. So thank you. I'm gonna release these folks to you, and I appreciate it. And, um, hang around as long as you want to. We were supposed to go to eight o'clock, I maybe hit that number, but if folks will let us hang here for a little bit, we'll do it, but, um, if there's any more to drink or eat, y'all have at it. Thanks a lot.